The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA seven or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special board meeting. We will begin with roll call. Beth, if you could help us with that, please.
Good evening, Welch.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Brandon Hoover.
Here.
Leighton Warren.
Here.
Becker.
Here. All right, all seven board members are present. We have one item up for discussion tonight, but before we begin, I just want to address a few things to the people in attendance and certainly those watching at home. Tonight's special board meeting is to make a decision on our mask policy for the beginning of the 2021-22 school year. The purpose of the meeting is for the board to have a discussion and to to take that vote tonight. If we ask the audience to remain listeners during our discussion, if it becomes, if we're unable to do our business during this meeting because of the actions of the crowd, we will have to take a recess and we'll conduct, excuse me, conduct the meeting virtually. So ask that that we're respectful during the conversation that will take place tonight. Also, just want to point out it is within board policy to have signs at board meetings. They cannot block the the view of anyone in the meeting, so not allowed to hold them up and block anyone's view. Certainly allowed to to have your signs with you. So just wanted to cover those two things. With that being said, I'd like to start tonight's meeting by making one of the two recommended motions. There's a second, certainly we can have discussions on those motions before we take a vote. So I will start the meeting by moving that effective August 17th, 2021, that face coverings for students, staff, adult visitors and contractors shall be, one, strongly recommended for unvaccinated individuals, but not required on district premises. Two, for district provided transportation worn in accordance with with federal requirements and three for WIA events worn in accordance with WIA requirements. And that should COVID-19 infection rates reach 1% for the district student and staff population over five consecutive days. Face coverings would be required and remain in effect until the district student and staff population infection rates fall below two tenths of a percent. As presented be approved. Is there a second?
I'll second, at least for a purpose of discussion.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second. I'm going to provide some comments around the motion that I made and why I felt like it was appropriate. First, I want to thank my fellow board members, the administration, school staff, families, the entire community for their perseverance over the last 16 months. This pandemic has impacted each of us in innumerable ways and the trauma, fatigue and desire to return to normal are certainly overwhelming. As we're faced with yet another difficult decision at the board table tonight, it is tempting and we hear from a lot of people that you should rely on science. The challenge with that, from my perspective, and this isn't new, is that the the science is evolving as science does and and the research into the impacts of the virus of the virus are playing out in real time. And even then, it's not always conclusive with the different medical institutions, the medical professionals disagreeing on the best measures to combat the virus. I want to point out, though, that as a board, we have a history of ignoring the science and and making our own decisions that that fit our own beliefs and and take into other other things into account. And I can give you some examples. In December of 2020, this past year, the CDC released a report that said schools could deliver in-person instruction safely with mitigation factors in place. However, we didn't follow that recommendation and we continued to keep the district in a virtual learning and that was a measure that I supported and I supported that because in addition to that report, I also considered local cases which were incredibly high in December. I also relied on feedback by internal experts, including those within our district that are charged with operating our district safely. And that caused us as a board to ignore the CDC recommendation at that time. Then a month ago, it was recommended by those that are charged with operating our district that masks are be optional for summer school. The community spread was almost zero. We were going to practice other mitigation strategies and those experts locally felt that we could run summer school safely. That measure was voted down six to one. After that vote, we unanimously passed a motion that made masks optional for high school students and staff, but required them for elementary and middle school students and staff when they were indoors. However, the CDC recommendation at that time stated that vaccinated individuals didn't have to wear masks. This means that we ignored the science and required 12, 13, 14-year-olds along with vaccinated staff members to wear masks, even though the science didn't recommend that. Didn't follow the science, but that's the way that the board voted. Last August, we sat here with a decision on whether or not to begin the year virtually and we had no idea what effects COVID would have on open schools when we made that decision. I made a statement during that board meeting that said that if the virus, let's just imagine it it had a fatality rate of one in 10,000 in children, that we could potentially lose two students in our district and I didn't find that acceptable. As I sit here a year later, I was, my prediction was grossly overblown. The estimates now again put the rate at probably closer to one in 150,000 young people. And even as we learn about the new variant, hospitalization rates in children are not increasing. The impact on COVID-19 on children is significantly less than other populations. And that's something the science is clear on. Finally, on the topic of clear science, we do know that the vaccine for COVID-19 is incredibly effective. And it's incredibly frustrating and disheartening that we have a population of people who aren't willing to really do their part to put this pandemic to an end. But remember that the end of the pandemic doesn't mean completely eradicating the virus. The goal is to lower the cases that lead to hospitalization and death. The goal is to allow our society to function without overwhelming our health systems. And the good news about that reality is that we're already there when it comes to young people. They are not being hospitalized and they are not dying at an alarming rate from COVID-19. And that's the reason why I support masking, optional masking for everyone in the Green Bay Public School District. So certainly open for other comments. I'll call on people as as they want to speak. I wanted to to make sure that people knew why I supported this motion. If there are other comments now, we can take those and if there aren't, then we can take a vote on that motion. Go ahead, Nancy. Don't forget your microphone.
And I agree with you, you know, I'm glad that it's not killing our children and you know, they're not ending up in the hospital. But I remember when we were in virtual learning that everybody just really wanted our kids in school. And one way to keep our kids in school without pulling them out to quarantine them, isolating them, all those things is to do every mitigation thing that you can do. And I I'm going to follow the science on that. I I as a teacher, I want my kids in my classroom. And it's the best way to go.
I guess I would agree with you on the point that it is my number one priority that we are in person five days a week and do everything that we can to make that happen. I won't disagree with that. Any other comments? Go ahead, Laura.
Well, I just, I I wasn't here with the previous decisions and I thought I had avoided that coming on in March, but I see that's not the case. And I'm and I'm up to the challenge. I just want to think, I appreciate everybody for being here. I know everybody here is passionate about their kids and cares about their kids and cares about the community. I find, does that mean?
I don't know. Could you just pull your microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
Okay. I find myself in a difficult position. I have read, you know, we've had so many emails. We had a lot of great calls the other night. Last night already, and I I hear all of the parents on with every possible viewpoint coming in. My struggle with this is that the CDC has recommended masks for people that were unvaccinated indoors to an older. Because we have a low vaccination rate, I don't remember what it is exactly now in our city, but I would feel I would be more comfortable with 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 children that couldn't be vaccinated being with vaccinated teachers. I'm a little nervous about having children be with teachers that are unvaccinated and unmasked. And that is my main concern. So I think because we're not doctors, I look to the CDC, I look to the Academy of Pediatric Physicians. And that is why I would think that I don't know more than they know in terms of the spread of this virus. And if they're rest recommending unvaccinated people be masked indoors, I just I just struggle with making a vote that doesn't support that.
Go ahead, Brenda.
So as I've considered all of the, again, to thanks to all the emails we got and the phone calls on Sunday, it was really good to hear the variety of differences and perspective on this. And to pick.
If we if we move the meeting virtual, I'm sure you'd have an easier time to hear. So we'll try to speak into the microphone. Thank you.
So if I, as I've looked at all of the information I've I've received from opinions, as somebody said, all, you know, all all over the map, I've really focused in on three variables of this of this equation. One is safety, one is in-person learning, and one is choice. And I think if I if I was, I start with the choice aspect. I know we have a lot of people that really think parents should be able to make a choice for their child. Unfortunately, the reason we wear masks is not to protect ourselves, but to protect those around us. And there are there are, the Delta variant has become, it's more contagious than the the prior variants and it's people can be infectious and and cause infection in other people before they even have symptoms. And so there's, we have, we have kids and we have staff in our district that are highly susceptible to getting sick, even if they're vaccinated. Anyone who's immunosuppressed, there's no reliable, there's no guarantee that they're going to be protected the same as people who are not immunosuppressed. So when we have children like that and staff like that in our schools and we allow people not to wear masks, we're allowing people to potentially be a risk to those people. And so you're taking away the, you're taking away, you're giving a choice to parents to put a mask on their child or not. But you're but you're not providing a choice to parents who are who are fearful for their children's health and are then exposed to potentially to the virus. And so that issue is difficult to solve because there's, there it's not just a choice of mask or no mask.
Hey, listen. Excuse me, we're having a conversation as the board and you yelling out like that is going to prevent us from being able to meet in person. Thank you.
And so there's, there's a choice of putting a mask on your child and then there's a choice of having your child protected from potentially other people that are unmasked in the school. My, my number one priority is to allow as many children this year be in person for their learning. That's the the primary objective of the CDC. It's the first thing on their list is that kids should be in school for their learning. And so if we have in the in the, especially in 11 and underage group, none of those kids are vaccinated. And so we we potentially are exposing some kids to being exposed to the virus. And if they're exposed to the virus and the masks aren't being worn, then they go into quarantine. And now we have children who have are at home trying to do virtual education. We have teachers trying to provide that virtual education in a hybrid model like we did last year. My goal is to take, is to have as few classrooms in that situation as possible. And I think by requiring masks in schools where they have kids that have had no opportunity to be vaccinated, we can, we can decrease the risk of kids being quarantined. And then I think, and I'll just, I'll, I'll stop there. You know, and I, well, one more thing, and I think, you know, again, my goal, I know that COVID doesn't, is is not as dangerous for children. You know, I know they aren't dying from COVID, but I do know that they can spread COVID. And 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 so that's, that's the reason why I'm not voting for this for this motion, because I want to make sure as many children as possible have the choice and or can continue in their in-person learning.
Sorry. Guys. Obviously, there's going to be things set at the board table that some people agree with and some people don't. I want to do our best to be able to continue to have this conversation in this kind of a format. So thank you for helping with that. I do want to point out that if we take a vote on this motion and it does not pass, we will then have an additional motion to see where we will eventually land with our policy. So are there any other comments on this motion before we take a vote? Go ahead, Dawn.
Steve, I have a question. Looking at the CDC guidelines that were updated on July 9th, they talk about specifically schools that serve children under the age of 12 who are not eligible for vaccination and they talk about layering mitigation strategies and I understand our numbers are very low in our community. They talk about, you know, multiple strategies, masking, distancing. Has something changed? Are we going to be able to distance in our schools and have that three feet of social distancing for students if we send our kids back to school unmasked?
We'll have the same issues that we had with social distancing when it came to returning students to school this past spring. Certainly do our best to try to keep kids either cohorted at the elementary level or physically distanced at the middle school and the high school level. Even though that distance has been reduced initially from six feet to three feet, it's something that we know frequently we will not be able to maintain.
Go ahead, Andrew.
So I had, I had voted for the alternate motion last time in hopes of taking taking a step towards making sure that we could be masked, masked optional outdoors. These questions are more are more technical in nature. I also, we also said that for high school students, because they were of an age to have the choice to take the vaccine, that they could be unmasked. Under, under this motion, and I'm not, if we're saying how are we, I I would presume, and I'm, I'm, I'm going to make it clear, I am not suggesting that anyone would have to show a card or something, but would it just be a strongly, I am not, I am not. However, I do want, if I'm going to vote for a motion on what unvaccinated individuals are supposed to do or not do, I need to know what the, how the administration is defining that and how, you know, how that's going to work.
It would work on the honor system, Andrew.
Okay, did, were we right on the mics both ways? I'm sure that, so.
It would be on the honor system, Andrew.
Thank you. All right, any other comments on the motion that's on the table? Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so with, with any of these motions, then, I mean, both, both this motion and the other one are different than the different than the current motion. The current motion speaks about ages and and so forth. Do I'm seeing. Andrew, I just want to clarify, the, the current motion doesn't speak, the motion that I made doesn't speak to ages. The the status quo, the motion that was was passed. If if nothing, if no motion passed today, we would still be on the June 7th rules.
Correct.
So I, you know, sorry, I meant the current rules, not the motion at this moment. Correct.
Okay.
How would we? And we have a situation where where COVID had, you know, truly a couple of weeks ago, it had really, and I've I've considered from from day one, I've looked at the I've looked at and focused on the countywide numbers. So from the beginning, I've been looking at the same thing, cases per hundred thousand in the county. We reached our lowest point ever a couple of weeks ago. And now we're, now we're higher, but still quite towards the low of where we've been since the very beginning. If we did whichever motion, if we did a motion that it wasn't fully optional, how would we, would we just be waiting for the next? You know, what if we're, so our case, we have and we're down around somewhere around 40 on the metric that I haven't used on the two-week, two-week basis? If we're, you know, if we're back low and staying low and school starts and we stay low, if we have some kind of some kind of other motion in place, how do we, how do we know or would we set a a date to revisit? I'm, I guess what I'm wondering is I I can, I can see that there's not, there's apparently not majority support to be mask optional now, but we also have five weeks before school starts and except for the last week or so, COVID has been has been dropping to one of our lowest rates ever. So I'm just, I guess I wanted to have some, some discussion around, some discussion around that.
Well, Andrew, I'll just speak to that and that's a good point. And really, the only people who could speak to that are the board members as the ones making this decision. With the rate as low as we've seen since this entire thing started and people who still won't continue or won't support masks being optional, when will masks be optional? What will it take? Because if it's guys, so, so we need to, we need to have that conversation to say, when would you feel comfortable? Because in the in the past, we had talked about burden rates and we were constantly looking at it and there were numbers that we didn't think we would ever achieve and we're there. And so if, if, you know, the, if you're not going to support the motion, when would you support the motion? Go ahead, Brenda. Guys, thank you.
So I would support the motion when everyone has a complete choice for their child. And right now, the students that are 11 and under, those families don't have the choice. I would support a motion that's on the table about four weeks or so after, you know, five to six weeks after the younger students have, are eligible for the vaccine. Because that gives the parents a little bit who are concerned about their students' health of being exposed to COVID, it gives them that added protection. And that's the message we're getting from a lot of our families is we've, we've come this far, we've, you know, it's, it sounds like the vaccine will be available sometime in in the fall. I think the the modeling that's being done with the spread of the Delta variant is they're predicting that the peak will be in October. And so I'm in my brain, I'm kind of looking at that after October, when young kids are vaccinated and hopefully will be on the downswing of the Delta variant.
So just just to confirm, you wouldn't support it being optional for everyone, but you, those who are eligible to be vaccinated, that second motion, then you would support it being optional for anyone who is eligible to receive the vaccine?
Yeah, which hopefully at that point would be everyone.
Right.
I mean, I don't know what the age range is going to be, 11 down to, you know, whatever that is, but I think that right now, there's parents that are unable to make the choice to protect their child because there isn't a vaccine and then they don't have a choice to protect their child if we give the option for everybody not to be. Because I think the, there's no question that the honor system isn't going to work. I mean, you, you, we were 50% vaccinated and any place you walk into, you don't see 50% of people wearing masks. So I think when it became optional, whether you're vaccinated or not, people aren't wearing masks, which of course increases the risk out in the community, but I think it's even more of a risk inside our schools because it's long stretches of time in, you know, with lots of people indoors. So that's, that's, that's why I'm looking ahead to to the point at which our younger kids, the parents at least have that option to to have their kids be vaccinated.
The only hesitation that I have, and I I don't disagree with that point overall. I'm very curious to see what age group the vaccine will become available to next. You know, I've seen eight, I've seen four, there's been some talk down to two. But if the vaccine comes out, it's possible that they say, you know, five and six-year-olds will never be eligible for the vaccine. We can't get enough kids in the trial that it's, it's so then my question there is, will masks be required for kindergarteners forever if they can never receive this vaccine? You know, when do we say that five-year-old?
But I I think you also have, you're going to have a percentage of students that are then vaccinated. And as soon as you have, you know, that's the old herd immunity reference, as soon as you have more and more people that are vaccinated, then the risk to the younger kids is going to be less and less. And I think the the spread ability in the research that they've done does, you know, it's lower in three and four-year-olds than it is in in over 10-year-olds.
Go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to to echo what Brenda was saying and then also saying we we can only make decisions on what we know now. I mean, if we find that five-year-olds, six-year-olds can't be vaccinated, but we can only look at what information we have now. And I I know there's strong feelings, obviously, when we talked about vaccinations, there was people that may not believe in vaccinations, obviously from the reaction. So I think that this is a very difficult position to be in. I would like to think of this collectively rather than individually. As a community, we're all in this. I'm I'm hopeful that people that want to get vaccinated how and would their children be vaccinated, that that can happen in the next, before 2022. And then if people don't want to vaccinate their kids or they don't believe in it, that is fine, but just to echo what Brenda said, that people that want to protect their children with the vaccine should have the opportunity before they have to go and be with adults who are not vaccinated at something that's required of law for them to be in a classroom. Or virtual, or if there's a virtual option, but some of us and other parents have kept their kids virtual for as long as possible and to have a small sacrifice of wearing a mask. I have allergies, I have eczema, I've experienced some of the things that people have talked about. So I understand the frustration with that, but I think it's a, it's a, it's a philosophical viewpoint of of collective good or individual. And this is a big change. There's call safe coming from the United Culture. It's what's best for the elders and the and the children, and that's how decisions are made. And that's how decisions are made. And this is, this is just different. And I would hope that we can all come together. I appreciate all of you and all of the viewpoints. And everybody here caring about their kids, but I, I'm hopeful. That we can come to some decision that's going to keep everybody the safest, but I don't support the motion as need.
Okay.
Which I already said, but.
All right. Any other comments before we vote on this motion? No. No other comments? All right, Beth, we are set to vote.
Online voting has been opened.
Sir, sir, this isn't, there's no public comment if, if. We are not posted. All right. Folks. We'll move this meeting virtual if we can't have decorum from the people in the audience. You can all continue to sit there and we'll go and, and perform the meeting virtual. I don't want to do that, but this is not the forum for this.
I'm sorry, Beth, I'm a no.
Just a reminder that after this vote, if it does not pass, we will continue the conversation until we can find a motion that does pass.
All votes have been entered, the motion has not carried. Results of individual board member votes are as follows. Banden Hoover, yes. Smith, no. Becker, no. Warren, no. McCoy, no. Leighton Warren, no. Welch, no.
All right, motion failed six to one. Is there someone who wants to make an alternate motion? We do have one on the table or something else, one that's posted, excuse me. If not, otherwise I will. Oh, Laura, sorry.
I, my alternate motion would be to maintain the. What we have in place for summer school where. Buildings that have children twelve and under who are unable to be vaccinated require masks for staff and everybody in the building. More eloquently stated somehow, but to, to maintain what we have for summer school.
So is that just your statement? That's not an official motion? That's sort of what you're, what you're trying to get at? Okay. So without that being an official motion, if I could just speak to my comments on that. And I, I said this earlier. My frustration with that is that that doesn't follow the CDC recommendation of people who are vaccinated. So how do you explain to? A twelve year old whose parents said, you know, maybe had, and we heard from people that said this, that they had conversations with their students, with their children. And the twelve year old said, hey, if I get vaccinated, I don't have to wear a mask. And yet we're turning around and saying, nope, yep, you do. Our staff who went out and chose to get vaccinated, who are now going to have to, to work. In an environment. With a mask. I just, I just struggle on what to say to them because what we would say is we're not following CDC guidelines.
Well, it's a compromise. If that's stray from CDC guidelines as it was for the summer. Personally, we could go, we could do what Madison Metropolitan School District did for a motion that everybody at all schools wear masks. I think that this is a compromise to that and to try to hear what all the parents are saying. The parents who want to go maskless, but if they have older kids, okay. You know, if there was, I, I don't see a middle ground. I think the, the Madison. Decision is not a fit for our district because of, there has to be some sort of compromise. So although it is not entirely CDC recognized or the recommendation of CDC, it's. It's, I just felt like it was a little bit of a closer. Reconciliation of, of what different viewpoints are on it.
Right. And, and I guess I would just point out again, the, the CDC didn't say. If you are vaccinated, but you're around five year olds, you have to wear a mask. So I, I would just, I would just struggle with how to explain to people. That, that we're not following that, I guess. You know, still, still requiring it now for, you know, students under the age of twelve who aren't eligible. Sounds like that they will be eligible within the next few weeks. Four weeks after that, then, then we can go optional for the entire district if that's the case. It's not that, that far away and hopefully that guidance will come soon. I don't know. I guess before an official motion gets made, I would ask the appetite of the rest of the board. Following our, our summer school guidelines or follow, you know, the, the motion that's presented follows CDC guidelines, which basically says. You know, anyone who's eligible to get the vaccine, you know, we're not going to ask for that to see if they've had it or not. But if you're eligible for the vaccine, you don't have to. Wear a mask versus what our current policy is. Which says that any building that has students under the age of twelve in it. Everyone in that building is required to wear a mask. So that's sort of the, the philosophical difference between two motions that could get made. So if, if someone wants to make a motion, I guess I would just ask that whatever it is, it includes the language in one, two and three. Two says, yeah, obviously we're required by federal law to keep masks on public transportation. And then the WIA governs the mask policy for athletic events. So. And then there's also the, the fourth or fifth bullet point that refers to. A one percent, five consecutive days, then the face coverings would come back until the, the cases fell. So if somebody feels like making a motion. If they don't, I'm gonna make one. Around one of those two philosophies. All right, then I'm gonna, I'll make the motion that's here and if this one fails, we'll try a third time. All right, so I move that effective August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, that face coverings for students. Sorry, that's the wrong, that's the one I just read. Effective August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, that face coverings for students eligible for vaccination. Staff, adult, visitors and contractors shall be, one, strongly recommended for unvaccinated individuals, but not required on district premises. Two, for district provided transportation worn in accordance with federal requirements. And three, for WIA events worn in accordance with WIA requirements. And that should COVID nineteen infection rates reach one percent for the district. Student and staff populations over five consecutive days, face coverings would be required and remain in effect until the district student and staff population infection rate. Falls or below two tenths of a, of a percent. And that face coverings for students not eligible for vaccination shall be required as presented be approved. Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
All right, so we've got a motion on the table, a second. That makes masks optional for. Optional for anyone age twelve and over. And required for students who are not eligible to be vaccinated. Are there any comments on this motion? Go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, so we already have. We already have masks optional. Outdoors in the current rules. Does that, does that go away under this motion? For kids under twelve, because right now all ages can be mask optional, at least outdoors.
At this point in time, we are using mask optional for all students outdoors.
But this motion doesn't say, say that.
So should I make an amendment to the motion? Okay, is everyone okay if we make just a friendly amendment that says, and optional for everyone outdoors? Okay, good catch, Andrew, thank you. Go ahead, Nancy.
Are, are we saying anything then about middle school per se, you know, like we have? Are we saying anything about the middle school situation then where some are eligible and some aren't?
So i- in this motion, it would follow CDC guidance that says if you are eligible for the vaccine, you do not have to wear a mask. Regardless of any other situation. So we would have an instance where some students in a school would be required and other students in a school would not. Again, with the intention that as soon as the vaccine is eligible and. Sounds like four weeks have passed where people have the opportunity to sign their kids up for that vaccine would then become. That no one, no one else would have to wear a mask. So that's what this current motion says. Go ahead, Brenda.
To piggyback on Nancy's concern, I think that. We, we did have a concern with middle school because we have sixth graders in, in the building and the majority of them are eleven when they start. And, and they interact, they cross paths and hallways, they, they're sometimes in band and. You know, other mixed classes together. And so I have a concern, I have a concern about that. And I mean, if we were back in the old days, we had K six and seven through ninth grade schools. You know, that would make this decision a lot easier. So that's my, my hesitation with this particular motion. Is that it doesn't cover the, the sixth graders. It also, I know we made the motion in June. Or voted, voted it through the. Concern also was in our K eight buildings, which of course have lots of kids that are under twelve. There's lots of kids that are under twelve in the K eight buildings. And so then that, of course, you know, increases chances of exposure if, if. The seventh and eighth graders are not masked.
So. The, the one thing that I would just add is, in my experience, and someone from the district can correct me if I'm wrong, but. In general, sixth graders are generally not as integrated with the middle school population. I, I guess we can't guarantee that and there is the FIAD in the, the lunchroom situations. But I do know like that, at Red Smith, you've got the, the elementary side and the middle school side. So it's not as intermingled as you might envision with like a high school situation where you've got ninth through twelfth graders. All mixing together and then obviously, you know, all of these motions would mean that we're still practicing as many other mitigation strategies as possible. We're not giving up on, you know, the, the contact tracing, we're not giving up on as much social distancing, we're not giving up on the. Cleaning protocols and the hand sanitizers, all of that is going to continue to remain in place. And, and the other thing is, you know, that I look at with, with, with this motion and it was in the other motion as well, but. It's not saying no masks ever, or the board has to convene and get back together to quick make a decision if we start to see it go in the other direction. We set a really, really low bar that if the number starts to, to tick back up, that the masks would come back in place. We wouldn't have to take any action. So as we sit here today with the case rate being so incredibly low and putting in a low benchmark for if we do see numbers being unsafe. That will help us to quickly take action. Steve and his team can put together. The, the strategies that they need and we'll be able to respond quickly. So I, I, I just, I feel like to be able to make that decision now, knowing that we have the ability to shift immediately. If we need to, is, is in place. Go ahead, Andrew.
But to have, to have an automatic, to have an automatic trigger where infection rates would have to. Would have to reach one, one percent and I'm, you know, I'm fully aware that at, at the end of this, at the end of this. Meeting, I, I hate to use, I hate to use the word sides, but may, maybe both of them aren't, both of them aren't gonna like me, but one percent is a. That's really high, right? I mean, that would be the number on the scale we were, when we were talking about cases per hundred thousand. That would have been a level of. A thousand where even some of the people who were involved in the open rallies were saying at that case level, some not all. Were telling me, okay, not yet, but we need to get there when it gets down. So that's a one percent active case rate is really, really high, isn't it?
Okay.
Uh, yeah, well.
So, so I mean.
It's the highest we, it's one point four percent is about the highest we hit of active cases and that was. Yeah.
So that, I believe that recommendation of one percent over five consecutive days came from. Medical professionals, that wasn't my, I, I don't, I don't know if you can speak to Steve where, where that recommendation came from, but. It wasn't, wasn't my idea.
You're right, Andrew, that number is higher than what we have had in the past. We looked at where we stand today. We looked at the capacity of the local healthcare. Community and made a determination that although it was higher than we've used in the past, it was something that we thought. Would be more appropriate given where the pandemic is today.
Go ahead, Brenda.
I'm wondering if it would be. And I don't know what the number I would recommend is, but I would like to look at the number of quarantines. That are going on in schools where we aren't masking. Because again, I think, you know, our. At least I feel like my job is to make sure we have as many kids eligible to be in person as we can. And if we start to have. That number going up and obviously it would likely mirror somewhat the case rate, but it would be. It would be an indication that perhaps we should. Institute the mask policy to see if we could bring that quarantine number down. Because I know, and I talked with Steve, but you, you don't have an answer to my question yet. About the quarantining, the.
So I can share that the question was about how many are quarantined at the high school and I didn't have that number handy, but right now. Quarantines for students in the district have been under twenty going back through the tenth of July. So they've been in low single digits, one, two, three, zero for staff during that timeframe.
And my question was referring to the. CDC appendix that said if a, if two children are, if there's an infected child and, and a student has close contact. But both of them are wearing masks, that you would not have to quarantine. Those, that, the, the child who was exposed.
So right now that would actually be slightly more restrictive than the administrative plans we have in place to manage quarantines.
All right, go ahead, Andrew.
So, so just, just to be clear when we're voting here then, with the. With the addition of the unanimously adopted friendly amendment that. All ages is always optional outdoors. Then comparing this to the status quo. It does expand the number of kids right now for whom masks would be optional, correct? Because right now it's optional for nine, twelve and it's masks are required otherwise. And it's also required in the mixed buildings. So this would make it optional for those eligible for vaccination. I, I think it's a. I think it's a, I think it's a step. There was not support to, to be fully optional. I, I, what I guess I do worry though, if our, if our cases continue. If our cases continue to be extremely low, if, if we start, if we start school with mass optional and stay, stay this low. I don't, I don't want to be artificially tied down. If, if our local circumstances are very, very good, I don't want to necessarily be stuck waiting for a, for a CDC. Directive either. So if there's, you know, I, where, where does that leave us if there's no. You know, as I said earlier, there's a lot of time between, there's, you know, I mean, there's the possibility we could have this. Completely. Completely licked by September first.
So I, I would say to you, Andrew, just like anytime, the board can always reconvene and, and take up another motion as information changes. So if something happens where the, the vaccine isn't eligible for elementary school, the spread doesn't continue. We're able to keep our schools open, we could always reconvene and choose to make them optional for elementary school as well. We're not just beholden to that CDC guidance forever. However, it, it does keep us in place where if the CDC announces that all elementary students will be eligible. In the past, we've, we've had that four week window from when it first becomes eligible and available. To allow people to, that time to get that vaccine and then mask. to allow people to, that time to get that vaccine and then masks would also be optional in elementary school. Go ahead Laura.
Just to offer, just to offer up some. Some statistics. I checked today, today we had 351 confirmed new cases in Wisconsin. And 29 of our counties are now in a hot, high category for disease activity. Since July 15th.
Guys, guys, hey, guys.
Since July 15th, our positivity rate went from 1.8 to 4.1% in this state. Every infectious disease expert says we are at the beginning of the fourth surge. And I truly feel that we should be prepared for a harsh fall. So to keep our kids safe and to keep them in classrooms, that is the priority. So we better mitigate, we better do everything we can because none of us want to go back to being.
Guys, this is going to be the last time. If we have to go, the people are saying things up here that not everyone agrees with. I want to continue the meeting in this format. Please allow us to do that. Did you get everything?
Yeah, I'm finished.
Go ahead Brenda.
I, I know that, that in middle schools, the, the sixth graders are, they're in houses. They tend to be separate from, from, you know, the other locations in the school that have seventh and eighth graders in them. I'm just wondering how difficult it would be with the middle school and K principals be able to figure out ways of, of preventing or ways of keeping the sixth graders interacting less with seventh and eighth graders. I mean, does that happen so much that it would be untenable to be able to, to ask them to do that? Or is it something that we could make some compromises and, and try to help keep our, the 11th, the 11 year olds, which mostly sixth graders, keep them masked and their teachers masked and then have no, not interacting with the seventh and eighth graders. And I don't know enough about the, you know, specifics of schedules to know if that's impossible or doable.
And over there during the first wave, we worked from a logistical standpoint with hallway control, with passing times and with other mechanisms like that, that allowed us to reduce the number of contacts in the hallways. And in common areas like libraries and cafeterias, I'm sure in either arcade buildings or our six, eight buildings, we could look at those types of mechanisms to reduce some of that interaction.
I mean, again, I don't want to make this, wouldn't want to make this enormously cumbersome, but you know, I even wonder about shifting bell schedules too, as a possibility of, you know, having the seventh and eighth graders exchange in the hall at a different time from the sixth graders as much as possible. And then I would have assumed that if this were to pass, then teachers who may work with seventh and eighth graders majority of the time, but then also have sixth grade, you know, go down to work with sixth graders, then at that point they would be required to wear a mask in that classroom.
Well, the, the current motion.
That's right.
If staff.
Okay. Oh yeah, forgot.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Is there an opportunity or would it be too difficult or would this be something that could be revisited and put a, put on the agenda posted for potential action at the, at the August regular board meeting? Could we look into for element, because a lot of, I've heard from a lot of parents, even, even those who are more not, not as, not as into having masks be fully optional yet, but something for FIAID. If it, if and when it's FIAID activities where there's some distancing in a classroom, there's a conventional classroom, there isn't going to be. Is that something that could be looked into or is there just too much of a, I'm just thinking that it wouldn't necessarily be every day, but depending on the activity, you might well be distanced enough.
So I understand that the question is, could we, under appropriate circumstances in physical education classes, give the building administrator and, and teacher in that particular scenario, an opportunity to consider requesting mask optional for those activities?
If, I mean, yeah, not, not carte blanche. I mean, I think it'd have to be within the spirit of things, but I think if we're going to try to make things a bit more open when there's, if they're doing an activity that's socially distanced, which some FIAID things are and some things are not. And I guess that could, that could expand further. I, I said at the beginning, you know, or actually we already took care of outdoors. So that's good. And I would, I, I guess I would like to see us, see something in a couple of weeks about what happens if we are looking at situations where there is some distance, which I guess that would be, that would be FIAID. And if a classroom, if a classroom met outdoors, outdoors is an optional situation. I wish, I wish we would have used that a lot more at the beginning of last year and we didn't. And I'd like to see us use that when we can during good weather conditions, as long as we have them to. As for, for me, this, this motion opens, opens the door more, it makes it optional for, for more kids. It's not, it's not perfect. I would, if we were, if we were getting anywhere close to one percent of the people having an active COVID case, that would be really bad, but we're, we're not going to. So I guess that's where, that's where I'm, that's where I'm at. But I guess I would like to see that, I'd like to request here that it be placed on the agenda with the possibility for action on the August regular board meeting.
Specifically about elementary FIAID.
I guess specifically about, specifically about FIAID.
But it would just be for elementary schools.
Because theoretically, but I can't, I'm not managing every possible wrinkle of a, you know, multi-grade school or something.
Yep, we can do that.
So that you did just place that on the agenda with the possibility for action on the 12th?
Yes.
Okay.
It's actually the ninth.
The ninth.
Go ahead Laura.
So I've spoken to a lot of families, a lot of people reached out to me and I just want to thank everyone who's done that particularly. I want to shout out to all the grandmas. We heard, I heard from a lot of grandmas. So a, a lot of the, the common theme in a lot of this feedback was that they object to the term strongly, in this particular motion that we're talking about now, strong, strongly recommend. I know that's what the CDC says, but that seems to trouble quite a lot of people that offered feedback. And I'm wondering if we can modify that language to offer more certainty. And similar to summer school, like Laura mentioned, a lot of people seem to actually like that certainty. And I'm wondering if anyone else feels that way.
How would you, do you have a suggestion on what you would change strongly recommend to?
I would say required to mask, I guess.
But, but so there's, we, we're not able to, I, I, I understand what you're saying and what you're asking for. We're not able to put in the operational mechanism necessary to make it required.
Well, what have we done this summer for summer school?
We have the ability to make it either required for all. I think what Eric is referring to is we don't have a mechanism to screen vaccinated and unvaccinated.
Is that what, that's what you're?
We created masking.
It, it's, it says, and face coverings for students not eligible for vaccination shall be required. So it, it does say the word required. So under, it's strongly recommended for unvaccinated of people who are eligible. It is required for anyone not eligible. So it does, the word required is there at the end, the second to last bullet point. So.
I guess, I guess in general, I would like to agree with Laura's first offering about sticking with what we have for summer school throughout this, throughout the, the next phase. I've heard from so many people and parents that said, keep it the way it is. We like it, it works. So what, I don't know what we can do to make it that way, but it's, okay.
So there's, there's nothing that we can do to make this motion that way. We'll take a vote on the motion as presented and if it fails, then we'll have to try something else. Go ahead Laura, I'm sorry.
I think, I, I mean, I'm new to the board, but I'm, I had not thought of making a plan. I, I didn't, I think of things happening here. I hadn't thought about making a, a plan statement. I, I'd like that you did that and I may take, I may take that up in the future to, to look at collecting my thoughts and being able to make a cohesive, put together statement on, on issues such as these. And as I talked about my thoughts about summer, I did not have a prepared motion because I thought we were just talking about it and could kind of get finessed into one. So I've been kind of jotting down some things here and I looked back at what was made in June 7th to look at that for a possible motion as well, if this one does not pass.
Go ahead, Andrew.
I mean, ju- June 7th would stand if this doesn't pass, right? I mean, that's where we would be at unless something else is made.
Yeah. So we, yeah.
Yeah. Which is the high school, high school and staff only have it optional. Okay.
Any other comments on this motion? All right, Beth, we're ready to vote on the motion.
Online voting has been opened.
Beth, I haven't been able to log in, Sam and no.
Beth, mine disappeared before I could vote.
Could everybody please re-enter their vote in? Our votes have been entered. The motion did not carry. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Vanden Hoegh, yes. Smith, no. Becker, yes. Warren, no. McCoy, no. Leighton and Warren, no. Welch, no.
All right, the motion fails five to two. With that being said, to Andrew's other point, so our, our current mask policy that we passed on June 7th requires, excuse me, makes masks optional for high school students and high school staff. And requires masks for anyone, adults or children who work in a building where students 11 and under are present. That's what our current policy reads. We don't need to make a motion to reinforce that policy. That policy is, is still in effect. We just passed it a month and a half ago. So unless anyone has any, oh, go ahead Brenda.
So I, the reason I voted for the previous motion was that I, I feel that in classrooms where students are required to wear masks, that we should also have staff wearing masks. And, but I am willing, I'd be interested in hearing from other people. I am willing to consider the first part of that motion and, and in other words, having 11 year olds required a mask. And I would probably say sixth grade because that gets too tricky then when they turn 12 in the middle of sixth grade. But having sixth graders wearing masks and allowing seventh and eighth graders not. And in that, and again, the teachers would be required to wear masks for the, in, when, when, in classrooms with sixth graders. And again, I, it's Steve, you said that was doable potentially to, to figure out a way to, to minimize the, the exposure of the 11th graders, sorry, the 11 year olds, sixth graders to the seventh and eighth graders. But that's something that I would be willing to entertain, but I'm interested in hearing what other people think.
So Brenda, just for clarification, the only difference, what you would be able to support that's different from the last motion is requiring that staff who work with students 11 and under are also required.
Yes.
But you'd support it optional for seventh grade and above.
Right, right.
I'd be willing to wordsmith that motion if, if anybody else is in favor of that idea.
Are we talking about the motion that governs summer school? Are we talking?
So the, the, the difference, correct me if I'm wrong Brenda, but just to summarize, the difference from our current policy that Brenda would propose is that students and staff seventh grade and above would be mask optional. Students and sta- students in sixth grade and below and staff who work with students, sixth grade and below would be required. So that's the.
Sorry, no. I mean, essentially that gives the option for masks to seventh and eighth graders who have eligibility for vaccination. So again, there's choice in that group.
So basically what changes from our current policy is that it extends the mask optional to seventh and eighth grade students and staff. From what we currently have. But would make them optional. Or make them required for sixth graders and below.
Right. Eric, I'm happy to share my screen with that wordsmithing if you'd like.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you. Yeah, if you could change the date to August 17. One, optional when outside, two, required for grades three K through six when inside district buildings. Three, strongly recommended but not required district premises. So it's, it's the, the rest of the other motions. Eliminate number four.
Yes.
Yes.
The number four. Okay, okay. I'll, I'll read it before we, before we vote. All right, so. I, I'm, I'm going to try a third time. I move that effective August 17th, 2021, that face coverings for student, staff and visitors and contractors shall be one, optional when outside. Two, required for grades three K through six when inside district buildings. Three, strongly recommended but not required on district premises for all individuals in buildings, grades seven through 16. Four, for district provided transportation, more in accordance with federal requirements. And five, for WA events, more in accordance with WA requirements. And that should COVID-19 infection rates reach one percent for the district students and staff population. Where five consecutive days face coverings would be required and remain in effect until the district student and staff population infection rate falls below two tenths of a percent. And that if the CDC alters their recommendation of requiring masks in schools and the district infection rate is below one percent, mask requirements would be lifted in accordance with the revised CDC recommendations as presented be approved.
Second.
Any other discussion on this motion? Go ahead, Andrew.
Again, just to, just to clarify what we're, we're doing here, a no vote on this motion would leave it as having the exception only for high school. A, a yes vote on this motion adds the option into grade seven and eight. And a, a no vote would have it just be still only high school. Correct, okay.
My question then, Steve, is if the eligibility for vaccination goes to students to a younger grade, and we get, will we need to make another motion and come back and do this again, or can we, four weeks out, they're eligible? What is, and, and I don't know if Melissa needs to win, but your opinion on that?
I'd say given the wording we have on here, we'd want to bring back a revised motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Andrew.
Although, although, yeah, if the CDC were to step in sooner and say that the mask recommendation is optional for elementary sooner, that would still be automatic. Correct.
How about if the, how about if the CDC, the, the numbers go up real, you know, real quickly, and the CDC recommends, strongly recommends, which is what they usually say, that everyone universally masked, then what would, what, how, how would, what would we have to do then?
I'd recommend we still come back and have that conversation.
All right, any other questions or comments on the motion? Go ahead, Dawn.
Can we see the motion again? I just had a, because they did have a question about district premises for seventh and eighth graders. I just want to make sure that's worded correctly, because district premise with seventh and eighth graders will have sixth graders there too. So I just want to make sure that's worded correctly. Yeah, but so looking at three in buildings for seventh and eighth. So if we have sixth graders in buildings with seventh and eighth graders, because it says premise, does that open that up for everybody? I guess I just want to make sure the motion is.
So, yeah, you're right. Number two says required for sixth graders, and then strongly recommended but not required for individuals grade seven through sixteen. So do we need to modify it?
I think you need to take, take out the, you know, in the buildings for seventh through sixteen.
I was wondering if you need to take on district premises off, because premises means, you know, inside, outside. If you mirror, can we make three?
But not required for grades seven through sixteen. Is everyone okay with that modification?
But it doesn't match. Two says required for grades three through six when inside. And three says strongly recommended but not required for grade seven through sixteen. Well, I guess we don't have to reiterate the inside then. Okay, all right.
Is there unanimous consent to modify that motion? Thank you for that clarification. All right, any other comments before we vote?
And Steve, you're confident that we will be able to isolate sixth graders?
Not that we would be able to isolate them, but we would work using the same protocols that we used during our readmission in the spring to create as much distance as possible between the sixth grade and the seventh and eighth grade in those buildings that have either K-eight or middle school populations.
All right, any other comments? Go ahead, Andrew.
So are there, I mean, if I remember correctly from middle school, although there could be some, some issues of passing time, there's there aren't nor regularly scheduled classes where sixth graders are mixed in, right?
No, but you do have classrooms where you will have sixth graders in with seventh and eighth graders.
Not at the same time, or?
Sure, you'll have some sixth graders that are taking advanced courses that are in with seventh and eighth graders.
All right, are we set to vote on the motion? All right, Beth, we're set.
Online voting has been opened.
Beth, I'm a yes.
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. The results of individual board member votes are as follows. Vanden Hoofel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton and Warren, no. Welch, no.
All right, motion carries five to two. With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Some.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, that concludes our board meeting. Thank you.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts board of education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling nine two zero four four eight two zero two five, or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.